Well, first and foremost, I want to thank everyone that we have here tonight in the city offices. It's great to see such an awesome turnout, and I'm sure you're all here for the RAP tax, even all the Cub Scouts. Second, also, to those of you at home watching on SF-17, on our YouTube channel, as well as on Facebook Live. This is our first Facebook Live of a portion of a city council meeting, so we're excited to do that for this portion of the meeting. So, we'll dive right in. Residents may have noticed, within the last week, received this pamphlet in the mail. This voter information pamphlet gives a lot of really good information about the RAP tax, so that residents can get informed and learn about what impacts, you know, a potential RAP tax would have on them as a resident, as well as the City of Spanish Fork. So, tonight, we'll get into some of these details, and what we'll really focus on tonight in our public meeting is, you know, obviously, what is a RAP tax? How are the funds distributed? What projects could be funded? And then we'll go over a couple of examples that we've seen in other communities that have a similar tax. So, what is a RAP tax? Well, a RAP tax is a sales tax. So, what it does is it increases the sales tax, and we'll go over the rates in a little bit. But the funds that are generated by a RAP tax are unique because they can only be spent and used on specific purposes that are related to recreation arts and parks. They can't be used on anything else, and they don't go to pay for city staff or anything like that. It's just for recreation arts and parks. Residents may be familiar with this concept because other communities have them. Orem has the care tax, Salt Lake County has the ZAP tax, Provo has a RAP tax. So, they go by a lot of different names, but they serve the same purpose. Now, the RAP tax doesn't last forever. That's one question that we've heard is, well, does this last forever? RAP taxes last for 10 years, and so, at the end of the 10 years, if the city and the residents are interested in continuing having this revenue stream, the city can put it back on the ballot and send it out to the residents to vote again. Typically, cities that do this see a higher approval rating the second go-around than the first go-around, which goes to show some of the benefits that communities have seen by having a RAP tax. So, how much is the RAP tax? Let's get down to kind of the brass tacks, right? What's it gonna cost me? Well, the RAP tax, the rate is .1 percent, so .1, and this equals, if you were to go to Walmart and spend $10, you would pay one penny in RAP tax. And the Utah State Tax Commission estimates that for Spanish Fork City in 2017, this would have generated about $490,000, and in 2018, $568,000. This is evident based off of the number of businesses, new businesses, that we're having within the city, business growth, as well as people that come here to shop that may not live here in the city. So, another question that we get is, well, why use a RAP tax? Why use a sales tax to expand recreation arts and parks within a community? Well, for example, if a property tax revenue stream were used, well, let's say using that same $10 spent, one penny generated in a RAP tax scenario. For every penny that a resident pays in property tax, well, that penny is one penny, and that goes into the general fund to pay for city programs. But with a RAP sales tax, residents are still paying that one penny, and that one penny goes into recreation arts and parks. But non-residents who come and shop in Spanish Fork, they will also pay that one penny on $10. And again, that goes towards paying for recreation arts and parks. Now, this one penny for residents and one penny for non-residents is calculated because the state tax commission, again, their data indicates that between 41 and 52 percent of all sales in Spanish Fork occur from individuals that don't live here. They come here to shop at our businesses, eat at our restaurants. And so, again, for every penny that our residents are putting into the RAP tax fund, one penny would also be put in from non-residents. So, how are the funds distributed? Does the rec department decide where they go? Does the city manager? No, city staff does not determine how the funds are distributed. In fact, it's the residents and the city council that get to decide that. A citizen advisory committee would be created if the RAP tax were approved on the ballot. And this advisory committee would review applications from not only the city parks department and any cultural arts projects from the city, but any other appropriate 501(c)(3) organizations within the community. And we really want to emphasize that the city has to go through the same process as anybody else. There's no green light path for the city to get these funds. They go through the same process as everyone else. So, this committee, they would review these applications, and they would make a recommendation to the city council for annual distributions for that year. City council would review the recommendations and then make the final call. So, what projects could be funded? Well, here's the ballot language that you'll see as your ballots are delivered this week, and I won't read this verbatim, you'll find it in your ballot, but the ballot lists categories that would be eligible for RAP tax funds. This top section up here looks at different program types, especially within the arts sector. And then down here, different capital improvement projects that could be eligible, for example, parks, courts and fields, bike paths, trails, splash pads, swimming pools, and performing arts centers. So, let's translate that into actual project types. Well, in preparation for putting this on the ballot, we spoke with you, the city council, and asked, what are some projects you would be interested in if the RAP tax were to pass? What would you like to see within the city? And a lot of the projects that you indicated are projects that we have heard as staff from residents, as they come in and say, hey, why doesn't Spanish Fork have this? Or, could we get this? Some of these projects that we'd like to really highlight tonight are the All Abilities Park, which is a park for children of all abilities. Improved arts programs within the community, community theater, as well as other children's arts programs. This would also include library programs. Trail connections, expanding trail connections within the city, expanding improvements and programs at our senior center, and other amenities throughout the city. So, what have some other cities done? Well, in Orem, they call theirs the Care Tax, and some of the projects that they've done, again, is this All Abilities Park that they call the Altogether Playground, which, again, is to help facilitate the activity and recreation of children of all abilities, whether they're in wheelchairs or may have other disabilities. St. George has a similar park, they call it Thunder Junction, and again, it's one of these All Abilities Parks. Orem has also done a new splash pad at Palisade Park, and they've been able to fund different programs, as well as improvements for the very popular Sierra Park Theater. American Fork has a pretty recent RAP tax that they've passed, they call it the Park, and here you can see that the library has been able to fund additional programs. There have been other parks and rec programs that have been facilitated, as well as community theater. Here, they've got Beauty and the Beast back in 2017. So, we, again, thank all of the residents that have come here tonight to learn more about the RAP tax, and we encourage you to get informed as you prepare to vote this November. We have a website at SpanishFork.org/RapTax where you can learn more. You can submit a question, and we'll respond to your question, and we thank residents who have been thoughtful and provided very thought-provoking questions the last few months as we've gone through this process. So, at this time, we will have, we've received pro and con statements that were included in the voter information pamphlet. We actually received a pro statement from the city council. We did not receive any con statements for that. So, I'll turn the time now over to our city council to read the pro statement, and then after which, I'll give it back to the council to go through public comment. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Okay. Proposition 7, RAP tax. Pro statement: Recreation arts and parks are core components of Spanish Fork's identity, whether it be the River Trail, the Sports Park, the Harvest Moon Hurrah, or variety of recreation programs. We take pride in our recreation arts and parks. They improve the quality of life of our residents, beautify our wonderful community, and provide opportunities for families, residents, to interact and to recreate.
Historically, Spanish Fork City has provided great programs and amenities for our residents. However, as our community continues to grow, so do the needs of our residents. Furthermore, residents regularly request new or expanded programs and amenities from the city. To further expand what is currently available for our residents, the city council has unanimously approved placing Proposition 7 on the ballot, which would enact a recreation arts and parks or RAP tax in Spanish Fork City.
The RAP tax is a sales tax, not a property tax, and would be paid at the point of purchase for all sales tax-eligible purchases in Spanish Fork City. The RAP tax would be a nominal increase of 0.1 percent to the sales tax rate, increasing the rate from 6.75 percent to 6.85 percent. This equates to one penny for every $10 spent. All funds generated by the recreation arts and parks tax could only be used to either expand or supplement RAP offerings in Spanish Fork City.
Because it's a sales tax, Spanish Fork residents will not be the only ones who pay the RAP tax. Anyone who shops in Spanish Fork City will be required to pay the tax. This is very important, especially considering how Spanish Fork is the retail hub in southern Utah County. Data from the Utah State Tax Commission suggests that between 41 and 52 percent of all sales in Spanish Fork City come from individuals who do not live here, and this percentage increases every year. This means that for every 50 cents you pay in RAP tax, you receive $1 in benefit.
Furthermore, RAP tax are not new to state or county. In fact, if you shop in Provo, Orem, Payson, American Fork, Salt Lake County, or Washington County, and St. George, you are paying the RAP tax and helping fund recreation arts and parks in these communities.
The RAP tax will enable the city to do more with what has been done in the past. As a council, we have a number of projects that could be funded by the RAP tax, including, but not limited to, All Abilities Park, Dog Park amenities, Trail Connections, Enhanced Art Programs like the Community Theater and Children's Programs, Amphitheater and Senior Center improvements.
We unanimously support Proposition 7. We take pride in our recreation arts and parks and are confident that the RAP tax will progress RAP offerings in Spanish Fork, ultimately making Spanish Fork City an even better place to live. Vote yes for Proposition 7, Mayor and Spanish Fork City Council. Okay, at this time, we'd like to open this up to public comments. Oh, do we need you to come up, Kent? Nope. Since there was no opposition to it, we don't. So, I'm gonna go into public comments. Just a word about our public comments. Anyone that wants to, to come up and talk for or against it, you get three minutes, and please don't repeat what someone else has said. So, if you've got something different to say, please come up and tell us, and we'll proceed to that. So, I'd entertain a motion to go into...
No. It's not a motion, it's just a motion.
Oh, just open it, that's right. We're just gonna open for public comments. Thanks, Kent. Someone needs to keep me in line, I thank you. All right, so whoever'd like to come up and talk about either for or against it, please welcome, and I'll be pretty strict about the three-minute rule. Thank you.
Mark Denny, 823 West, 450 South. I think these projects are great, recreation, parks, and arts, and I think we already have a pretty robust program in the city with these things. So, I don't think that it's necessary to have another tax. If it was a public safety issue, that could be different. I think we need to make do with what we have, and I think we already have a really good overall system, so I would urge to vote no on the RAP tax. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. My name is Nate Muswell, I live at 1208 South, 2970 East. I am not coming up here for or against the tax, but I do want to point out that I found out recently that the time to submit rebuttal for a no vote was very short. It sounds like you all had a lot of time to come up with your statements, and that's really good, but it was posted on the website and on Facebook on August 30th with a September 4th due date to have a no rebuttal, and I want to say I don't think that was enough time. So, I would encourage you in the future, please to give more notice. Thank you.
You.
My name's Jared Mitchell, 740 North, 100 East. So, my only concern would be that some of the projects that might get approved in the future, like an indoor aquatic center, or like facilities or something like that, might ultimately need to have property tax increases if the ongoing funding becomes too much. So, that would just be my concern, so, thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Bjorn Pendleton. I served as president of the Arts Council for 10 years, and I appreciate you giving the Harvest Moon Hurrah shout-out in your statement, because that's been my baby for 14 years. To me, the RAP tax is a no-brainer. Why would you not want other people to give you money? People that don't live in this community. And the fact that 50 percent of that money is gonna come from non-residents, why would you turn down that money? That's just a no-brainer, in my opinion. And people see pennies on the ground all the time and never pick them up. Why would there be a complaint when you're spending one penny in every $10 to go towards making your community a better place, towards improving the quality of life in this community? And so, again, I say, it's a no-brainer, and I'm willing to pay that extra penny per $10 to make this community that I love a better place, better for my generation, better for the next generation, and improve it in so many ways. And I love the arts, and my kids are all involved in all the sports and recreation programs, and so, if for no one else, I would do it for my kids. Thanks. Thanks.
Mayor and council members, my name is Duck Ford. I'm a citizen and also a member of the Parks and Recreation Committee. First of all, Mayor, I apologize for not wearing my coat and tie. I was in a little bit of a hurry when I got home, I couldn't find my tie. I'll make sure next time that I...
And you got that on record, that you said next time. So, yeah, I got that.
Well, great. Anyway, I, as a member of the Parks and Recreation Committee, we've had several discussions over the last several months about this tax, and we all are very much in favor of this. I think there's one thing that maybe was not brought up in the presentation that's pretty important, and that is, when we shop at a different city that has the RAP tax for their city, we're paying for their recreation programs too, or helping pay. So, what's brought up as far as the other different communities coming into our city, you know, that's how that would work. So, we're already helping the other cities that have a RAP tax that we may shop. From me personally, I always, I mean, the way this city runs and has the recreation programs, the facilities, I mean, it is awesome, and first-class. Just the other night with the pickleball court opening, I mean, that's first-class. When the city does something, it is first-class. And I think that's, you know, if we can do anything to keep youth into recreation, I think that's going to help with all of the things that's going around us, or happening in this world around us, and happening in this city around us. I think any time that we can promote and help recreation to the youth and even adults, I think we're gonna be way further ahead. So, me personally, and on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Committee, we totally support the implementation of the RAP tax. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug's comments are perfect for me to piggyback on. My name's Susan Chapman, and if you know who I am, you're probably familiar with a lot of the things that I've done and tried to do personally with the city. I've been kind of a bully. I'm really passionate about public health, and there was a comment about whether this was a, if this was a public safety issue, this would be different. And to me, it's one and the same. I'm very passionate about suicide prevention, I'm very passionate about extending the lives of the community around us. As you know, because I've preached it a lot, is that our leading cause of death of youth right now, ages 10 to 17, is suicide. And what does this have to do with the RAP tax? Let me back up a little bit. Right now, we're offering classes, suicide prevention classes, gatekeeper training that we're doing in the community, and so, I mingle a lot with those who have suffered loss from suicide, and I've contemplated a lot, what do we do with this problem? How do we do it? How do we work online, upstream with this problem before it becomes a problem? And in my research, and my education is in this, I really focus on evidence-based programs, what has worked in the past in other communities, what is it? And social development strategy, and I'm gonna repeat that, social development strategy. A lot of people have wondered what this RAP tax is going to do for our community. Social development strategy is where it's at. This is very proven, it's scientifically based. It's when a community comes in, they provide opportunities, they provide skills, they provide recognition for youth. That is proven, 20 years down the line, it increases academic performance for our children in their future, lowers substance abuse, lowers violence, lowers suicidal ideation. It really is a way that the community can provide a whole, a whole line of, well, it can provide a lot of, it can, it could prevent a lot of problems in society. So, if you're wondering if the RAP tax will make a difference in our community in the future, it surely can. I have five boys, only one of them is interested in sports. The other three are interested in the arts, even, and we've tried everything to get them interested in sports. But, so, you're missing a whole group of kids if we only focus on sports, right? And these programs funded under the RAP tax will also help a lot of kids that will miss out on these programs otherwise. So, I am all for this. We have a lot of non-residents coming into our, into our great city, and they're shopping at our great businesses, they're causing a lot of traffic. I look at this as a way, if I were a business and I could see the benefits of this, I would think, wow, this is great, look at what I can do for my community. Look at how I can give back. I can give back in great ways. So, I would be proud, if I was a business owner, to give back into my community in this way, and that's just my two cents, so, thanks.
Right on the three-minute mark. Proud of you. Oh, look at that. See, I told you he was right. No, that doesn't count. No, that doesn't count.
He has to buy donuts.
No, because I was the regular.
Yep. Not the record show.
No, and don't talk to Doug about it either.
Further discussion, Doug.
Yeah, under further review. All right. Anyone else?
I don't know if I can even get my name and address out in three minutes, so I'll give it my best try. I'm John Mendenhall, lifelong resident of the area of Spanish Fork, and first of all, I'd like to thank Spanish Fork City for taking care of our finances and our money. As a young man, I wasn't interested in the arts very much. I pretty much just participated in sports, and Spanish Fork has been known as the leader of sports in our community for a long, long time. I was grateful for that all the time. In the recent past, I have been drug sometimes screaming and hollering into the arts part of life in Spanish Fork and in other areas, and one of the things that I'm extremely impressed with of Spanish Fork is, any time that there's a major thing that happens, Spanish Fork asks for the input of the citizens. And there have been a few things that haven't gone so well, that were voted down because the residents decided that they didn't want them. One of the things that impressed me in the presentation tonight is that the monies that are received from the RAP tax will not be completely decided by staff and by the mayor. It will be, it will come from a committee that is formed from the residents of Spanish Fork City. And that's extremely important to me, that there'll be a lot of people that will have input into what these funds are used for. It's restricted to those things, and I think that's a great way to do it. And I support the tax for that reason. I think it's a great opportunity for us to continue to stay on top of the arts, the parks, and the recreation. As a matter of fact, I've talked to a lot of people who have moved into Spanish Fork over the years, and one of their reasons for wanting to be a citizen of Spanish Fork is the opportunities that are here, and not just sports, but other things that Spanish Fork has, and that we fund, and we take great pride in. And I think that that is a great program, and that I would second the notion that it's a great opportunity for our children and our youth to be involved in something, because if you're not involved in something, you'll find somewhere to be that you probably shouldn't be. So, thank you to the mayor and city council.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Chief Adam's still here.
Well, I'm up here because the mayor gave me the finger to come up. His finger. My name's Dave Boyack. I live on the east end of town, I'm not sure what my address is, because my wife builds a new house about every three years. So, where I live, when I go to work, I drive past a park, Sierra Park, it'll be that same of it, and it's full of kids on a nightly basis, and it just, it does my heart good to see that. I often wonder where those kids went before that park was built, which makes me think we probably need to build more. If those kids are not in parks recreating and playing, they're home on their devices, wasting time, in my opinion. This is a good, this is a good place for these kids to be. And so, as has been mentioned before, to me, this is a no-brainer. That number goes up every year, about, it looks like about $80,000, and with new businesses coming in, there's just a lot of good things that I think could be done with this. My love is recreation and sports, but to see kids outside recreating and participating is one of the best things we can be doing, and having kids participate in, so, I'm all in favor of it. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
My name's Karen Bradford, and I live at 363 North, 450 West. I also work for the city in Parks and Recreation, and one of the divisions that I deal with in a supervisory manner is the Arts Council. And over the last about 10 years or so since the Arts Council came under the umbrella of the city, and it's probably been longer, anyway, about that maybe, I have gotten to know so many of these good people that are invested in the arts for no other reason than to bring joy to the community, whether it's through youth theater, or the adult cultural arts classes that we try to do in January and February, the Youth Arts Festival that they do the first two weeks of June, which last year had about 1,200 kids participating, the Harvest Moon Hurrah, as has been mentioned, our corral group, and they, they are, most of, all of these divisions, except for the teachers that we pay to teach classes, oh, and youth theater, oh my heavens, I can't forget youth theater, but all of the directors, except for the teachers that we pay to teach in these programs are volunteers. And I have watched, and I maybe didn't mention community theater too, either. I'm gonna be in trouble if I leave somebody out. But I watched these volunteer people look at their budgets that they have, and many of them are self-sustaining budgets, meaning that what they bring in is what they can spend. And not every year, we can't do a Disney film in community theater, because everybody wants to, you know, try their hand at a drama, or some other genre, but we know Disney is what brings in the money, and so, they try to, they have to look at things from that standpoint, rather than how they will grow as a part of the community theater. And I would love it if we had this money that was for recreation arts and parks, that they could make an application to do a project that they felt like would be a benefit to the community, or that they would love, and be able to have a... to the community, or that they would love, and be able to have a little bit of help financially, so they didn't always have to worry about balancing. They, and knowing these people, they will still be very fiscally responsible, because that's how they are. But, but they work so hard to try to bring the opportunities to the kids, devote so many hours, and I just, I have a lot of respect for the people that love arts, because they do it, because they know it enhances life. The other point I wanted to mention, and I appreciated, five minutes? I haven't been going five minutes.
Got 10 seconds. But go ahead.
All right, I'll say this.
You get extra.
Oh, thanks. I'll say this really fast. I appreciated the point of the gentleman when he says that we do have nice facilities, and we do have good recreation. And I, I appreciate the support of the city council, and them realizing how that does enhance life in Spanish Fork. But I also know that our community is growing, and as part of the city and the budgeting process and hearing what's going on, I know we're going to expand, we've already expanded fire and ambulance to daytime shifts. I know that won't be that long before we are going to go full 24/7 shifts. We're, we're looking to build a new fire station. These are a library we need. These are things our community needs as we grow, and need to keep updated, and as these essential services, then sometimes what can get pushed aside are the things that just enhance our life in the community, because we do need essential services. So I just, I know you guys are good planners, and I appreciate what you've done, but I think that's a good thing to keep in mind, too. Thanks.
Thanks.
Karen.
Does anyone else have goosebumps, because it's so darn cold in here?
Oh, geez.
I'm just saying, I'm freezing.
You can have my coat.
You're freezing, Angie? Thank you. I have my coat on my lap. If you could get me a minky blanket out of the closet in the back room?
I have one in my car, do you want me to go grab it?
Yes, after your comment, then you can run out.
I have a daughter that takes it to, to school with her, unless I pay attention.
It's just cold, I'm just saying.
Yes. Hi, I'm Angela Eckhart, I'm with the Arts Council too, and I know you've already heard some things about, first of all, I have to say that we love Karen for putting up with us, because she does an amazing job. And part of what she said is what I wanted to hit on. Like, we had Harvest Moon Hurrah, and I'm in charge of the, the Children's Tent for Harvest Moon Hurrah, and it's one of my favorite things, it's so fun to watch it through, watch kids come through. We had about 700 kids come through and do different projects, and my budget for that this year was $200, which was up about $50 from what I've had before. I love being able to do it, but it takes a lot of figuring out how to do those activities, six different activities for 700 kids with that much money. And I love it, and I know the other people that are there for Harvest Moon Hurrah and all of the other activities, um, love it, and we do it because we love it, but it would be nice to make an application to get a little bit more funding for some of those things. Part of the reason that we moved to Spanish Fork when I moved here, oh my goodness, 20 years ago, is because there were so many programs for families, such a family-oriented, lots of recreation programs, lots of good things going on, and there still are, but we are growing, and we do need more funding for this, so I hope that, hope you'll keep that in mind. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right.
I'm Jefferson Hunter. I, I live 1146 East 225 South, just up the hill, and I'm here to represent all the scouts that were and are here. I think it's a good idea, because if you spend $100, it's only 10 more cents, and like, that 10 more cents, like you saw the numbers, they could go towards so many things, we could have way more activities for lots of other things, and everybody could have a chance. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
What I like about the youth of our city, you know, very good. Thank you for coming up. Anyone else? If not, then we'll close those public comments and move on. Is there anything the council would like to talk about?
I have a quick question, Scott. Will you remind me on food services? Are we charged still, taxed the same?
That's a great question. So, certain food items are either exempt or have a reduced sales tax rate, and so, for those items, the sales tax rate would not change. So, and there's a long list that the state has on what can be taxed if it's food. If you go to a restaurant, it's charged, but if it's just...
Like a grocery store?
Groceries. If you're buying groceries, you typically don't, you pay a reduced sales tax on those groceries, and those would not be impacted.
Okay.
Sorry? Oh, yeah, so, couple of comments that we had that we'll just address as staff. The first, there was one comment about property taxes, and does this then create a liability down the road if, if funds were to be used for some type of facility? While RAP tax funds could be used for a recreation facility, or an indoor pool, or, or something of that nature, we don't see that it would be very likely to do a recreation facility. For example, the Life Center, I believe the, the annual debt service payment was just over $2 million. And so, if we took all nearly $600,000 from the RAP tax and put that towards a recreation facility, it's not even going to come close to the, the annual cost, and that's just the debt service, that's not operations or anything like that. Furthermore, you wouldn't have any money to spend on, on other areas. So while it could be used on a recreation facility, we don't see that being very likely, and so we don't see this being something that would create a property tax liability down the road. The second comment was about public noticing. So we did notice a request for the pro and con statements on the city website, on Facebook, as well as in the city newsletter that's distributed to all utility accounts. The state doesn't require cities to notice for a pro and con statement, but we felt that it was necessary to do so, and, and would be helpful for our residents. And so, we did notice that a few days before, the, the process is residents would just have to say, I'm interested in writing a pro or con statement, and then they have another week after that to actually submit the statement. So, we did give some notice, though not required by state to do so.
Good to know, thanks.
Hey, since this is our first Facebook Live, have there been any questions or, or comments that we might need to respond to there? No, none? Okay, thank you.
How does Brandon look on camera?
Am I okay? Okay. Because we can start over. I wrote down everybody's name, and I'm sure that I'll be happy to come back up.
Well, the one thing about Facebook makes you look skinnier. So you're okay.
That's not true.
I don't know, the rest of the council probably has some, some comments about this. I have a couple of comments that, that I'd like to make about the RAP tax, about our parks and recreation and our arts programs. I appreciate Karen bringing that up. I appreciate Doug being up here, the mayor, our assignments switch around as council people, and I've been fortunate enough for the past year or so to sit in with the Parks and Recreation Committee that meets every month. And what a great group of volunteers, just like every other group in this city, the volunteers are just amazing, that they get together and talk about ways to, to enhance the, the citizens, the offerings to our citizens here. And in that vein, may, maybe the first thing I wanted, and people have talked about this, but about what's attractive to Spanish Fork, and I know we could all go really quickly and find something like this. So last night, I just wanted to, the first listing that I found in Spanish Fork, and there's a few, I can't believe somebody didn't want to sell their home and move to somewhere else, right, Mayor? Except you've done that before, you moved away for a little bit. Required work.
Required, not very long.
So I'm su, I'm sure this resident too had to move for, for work or something, or is looking of it. Here's their listing, just the first, the first couple sentences. Hard-to-find two-story home located near the Spanish Fork River Trail and Sports Park. Now beyond that, it goes plenty of upgrades and amenities, and, and luxury vinyl planking, et cetera, details about the house. The first item in that listing to sell this home was walking distance to the River Trail and the Sports Park. Why I want to bring that up is sometimes when we're talking about a tax, especially at local government, it gets into a discussion of wants versus needs. And, and so, whi, which I think taxes should always be debated, you should have a robust debate, and see, see if it's the best thing for a community. But I guess what I'm, what I'm getting at in a long way, Mayor, is I think the debate needs to move. The, the debate needs to move, when it comes to parks, arts, and recreation, it is a need. It is certainly a need. It's a need for so many things in our community. What I just read you was a, a need for that person's house value. That person feels like that's an amenity that is probably a reason why they moved to Spanish Fork, and is probably a reason why they think someone's going to want to, to move to Spanish Fork. Now, because I say that's a need, parks, arts, and recreation is a need, does not mean that we are, that it's one or the other. That doesn't mean that we're sacrificing public safety. That doesn't mean we're sacrificing roads, garbage, sewer, all the, all the necessities that we need to function as a community are not being sacrificed for parks, arts, and recreation. But, in my opinion, they do need to, we need to have the discussion and the debate from, it certainly is a, a standpoint of need. If you'll indulge me, a personal story, I, I've told this to a few people, I don't think I've said it here, you can stop me if I have, but it's like so many others in our community, we have volunteered to coach, whether baseball, basketball, soccer, anything, right? We've, we've all taken our turn and, and taken the, the, one for the team, if you will, and coached. A couple of years ago, I coached my son in the, on the Dodgers. We were kind of a rough team, and then we came together right at the right time, won some games, and ended up winning the state tournament. It was the greatest thing ever. Bunch of eight-year-olds jumping up and down and yelling, and the dads were yelling louder than the eight-year-olds, because that's how it goes, right? We were just excited, we were on top of the world. It was so fun, and it made a difference in those eight-year-olds' lives. Next year, or, excuse, yeah, the next year, we move up a league and we're, we're the Twins. Last year, the Twins were kind of rough, Mayor, and it wasn't the coach's fault, it was something else.
And that's debatable.
We, we barely won half of our games, we struggled, we, you know, sometimes it didn't seem the kids were having fun, sometimes it didn't work. And, and so, we get to the end of the, the season, and I'm a little down, thinking, gosh, this wasn't the best experience, it wasn't the best experience for me, wasn't the best experience for these, you know, now 10-year-olds, I don't, I don't think this was very successful. Walking into, to the last game, jeez. A mom stops me in the parking lot and, and says, hey, tears in her eyes, like, like mine, and says, hey, I want you to know how much this meant to my kid. The last couple of months have, have been, have been awesome for him. And I'm thinking, are we seeing two different teams? It didn't seem very awesome at times. The growth of that young boy that I learned after, didn't have the best home life, didn't have the best opportunities, it meant everything to him. It meant everything to him for a few months, that he got to, to not only play baseball, but improve his social, his physical, and, and his mental health. And so, it was a wake-up call to me of, of what parks and recreation can be. In the same vein, I appreciated what Susan said of, of it's not all about recreation. We're big into recreation in this city, and it's a good thing. It's, it's blessed a lot of people's lives, adults and children. I've got a brother who, we all, my sister and, and my two brothers, we all played sports growing up. My older brother went into something different, went into something different, went into the arts, went into music, and went into everything that, that is music. And I, I don't think, I think there's more offerings now than there were then, when my brother was, was growing up. His, I remember one of his earliest performances, if you will, was joining my grandpa at the Senior Citizen Center and playing an organ for the people to enjoy music. And, and that opportunity, and I look, you know, I played baseball and, and basketball, and fortunately, just barely, I didn't make it into the pros, Mayor, I did not make it.
I feel your pain.
Yeah. I had to settle on, on, on becoming a banker and, and doing that. My brother, however, the passion that some of these kids have, instead of, for sports, and put it into arts programs that are available for them, turn into life-changing experiences. Where am I? I, I work day in, day out, and doing something I didn't know that I'd ever do when I was a kid. My brother is living his dream, literally living his dream. Last week, he has performed in front of thousands, hundreds of thousands of people. He was scheduling Carnegie Hall in New York last week for his choir and his orchestra. And I, I just look at his experience and think, are we missing that in our arts programs? Are we missing those kids that maybe if we gave them a better avenue, a better shot at, at honing their skills, at moving up, that, that they could, they could do it for a passion? He's going to be a doctor in that field, and, and he's taken it to the nth degree, and I think we are, I think we do miss on, on some of that stuff. This proposal would give that many more opportunities, I promise you, it would give that many more opportunities to our young kids to learn, to grow, and, and maybe become something like, like that in the future that would reward, that would, would reward us all. I've talked with other cities about it, I've talked with our counterparts, but I've also talked about the residents. The residents, if they know they have this tax, they certainly don't feel it. They do, however, feel the results of it. They feel it. They feel, Councilman Gordon and I made a dumb little video one afternoon, and to see the joy on some faces of some kids in an all-abilities park, we, our hashtag was the "two cents", Gordo, was it worth your two cents? And, and after that, we, we certainly found out it was, for the kids that, that could get in specialized equipment and, and play in an all-abilities park. A host of other things that we know it could, it could go to, but even today, talking to the folks at Intermountain Healthcare at that meeting that I alluded to earlier, they, these are medical professionals, so these aren't politicians, these aren't city people, these are outside health professionals that are now prescribing patients to walk. They're saying, you got to walk more, you got to get physically healthier, you got to get mentally healthier, you got to get socially healthier, and they're prescribing that to them often. A program like this is making those offerings that much more available, and will, will, incrementally improve the, the health, the social, physical, and mental health of our community, and that's why I would encourage all of us to study it and, and vote for it. And I think it'll change our community for the better.
Thank you. Elsie Mendenhall, I think he summed it up for all of us.
Agreed.
And so, we appreciate that. So, thank you for participating in this, both sides, and that's what this government's all about. This is the process we have here, and now it's your opportunity to, to go to the polls and vote, whichever way you'd like to vote, so.